I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. Very much appreciate all of your attendance. And I know that we have a number of folks who would like to speak this morning. So before we get into the business of our agenda, I would like to invite anyone who would like to speak to come forward at this time. The way we're going to do this is at the center podium here, there is a microphone. And if you would like to speak, we would like for you to come forward and you can just form a line. And we will allow three minutes for each speaker. I would like to ask all of you to please be respectful of the speakers. Please try to show them the respect that you would like to receive if you were speaking. And I would also caution you that we do not want to have any outbursts. Anyone who does not want to play by those rules will be asked to leave. But we welcome your opinions, we welcome your comments. And so if someone would like to step up to the mic and begin, we have a timer, I believe, do we not, Amelia?
Yes.
We have a timer. Mike? Okay, excellent. So, and anyone who wants to follow in whatever order you would like. And if you would, once you approach, just identify yourself by name and then, three minutes, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bob Bulrick and a member of your Presidential Search Committee. And I'm hearing, I'm appearing this morning in order to address some issues which, as you know, have arisen. I think as we start, there's some good news. And the good news is that there's some givens. G-I-V-E-N-S. And, and the givens are that I think everyone in this room is here for the purpose of attempting to select the very best president possible for St. Pete College. Second given seems to me is that whatever else can be said, the trustees are in charge. They have complete authority and power to make the decisions that are necessary to move this process. I think a third thing that we can assume is a given is that some, the system has become somewhat contentious. And I think lastly, we can all agree that there's some choices before us. And the question is, and I have to ask myself, have we limited the choices to the trustees? And if I were a trustee, why would I not insist that I have as broad and as great a number of choices as I could possibly have? Why would I want to limit my choices? Why wouldn't I insist that there be more choices? What I would ask myself, is the harm in having more choices? What is the downside of having more choices? And given the fact that the usual and customary idea is that if I were in your position, why would I not want to have more choices? And who would suffer from having those more choices? So there's a broad interest here this morning. And I'm sure you're going to, you're going to hear it. But the trustees are at the helm and it's up to them to make the decisions and to sit through this process. It's one of the reasons you don't delegate the selection of the next president to a committee, but only ask for some assistance. Now you have, and will be, you'll be certified this morning, a list of slate from the Presidential Search Committee. Given the fact that there have arisen some differences of opinion and some contentious process.
Ten seconds.
Given the fact that there are, there's only one vote that distinguishes many of the candidates here this morning, I suggest to you that you have a great option. You have an option to look at a time when there was harmony and unity in the Presidential Search Committee. When there were eight candidates who had been, who had been vetted, who had been approved as appropriate candidates for you. And it wasn't until the second meeting that that became contentious and those candidates were limited. So I suggest to you this morning, you've got a great opportunity to look at the eight candidates at a time when it was, there was harmony and unity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bulrick.
Margaret Hyde with the American Association of University Women. And I'm going to speak to an issue because you have not hired a new president for 30 years. And I don't know how you consider your responsibilities as you sit here on this board. But I would like to think you sit here because you want to continue, you want to have the integrity and the reputation that St. Petersburg, St. Petersburg College has. However, as I have watched you, you have become a rubber stamp for the president. You have allowed him to operate without any supervision or without any accountability for extended travels for, I think the thing that disturbed us most of all was when he took and hired a personal friend to head up the International Studies when there were people in that department who were very much qualified for that job. Yet the position was never opened up so that any of them could apply for the job. He hired this girl directly. Now, I'm not talking about a cook in the kitchen, I'm not talking about a janitor. I'm talking about the head of a department. You allowed him to extend his contract when it ran out because he said he had so much more to do. Yet suddenly, he decides he wants to retire now, just to coincide with Rick Baker leaving office as mayor of St. Petersburg. Now he would like to come back and work in your International Studies Department, just beyond the staff. This is something that you have allowed to grow way out of hand. You have allowed him to have too much power for too long. And you're not even aware, as a trustee, of the discord and discontent on the faculty. Because if you're on the faculty, you're not allowed to disagree with anything because of repercussions. I honestly and sincerely hope that in the future, you will never allow anyone to have this much power again in running St. Petersburg College and that you will help maintain the integrity and the reputation of the college.
Thank you.
My name is Earl Freitas. I am a member of the Search Committee and I'm also the Faculty Senate President. I first want to start by thanking all of you for your service to the institution and this great community. We have just concluded a fair and open process with a vote of the Search Committee that came up with four qualified candidates to be the next president of this college. Some critics of that committee claimed that the vote was tainted or somehow unfair. Members of the Board consider this. How could the vote have been unfair under the direction of a chair, a consultant, a college attorney, and a board attorney who all said that we could vote for any process we chose? There have been wild and exaggerated claims in blogs, letters to the Board, and even in the press that say that the procedure to choose the third and fourth candidates was irregular or unfair. Somehow, it has not been reported that those procedural votes were approved in a nine-to-three vote with one abstention and a ten-to-three vote. These facts poke way too many holes in their conspiracy theories. Adding names to the list now would do great damage to the credibility of this college. Who will ever apply here again without thinking twice? Will we lose the qualified candidates who have already been vetted by a representative and open process? Members of the Board, as you probably know, many colleges and universities have provosts who run the academic side of the House and the president acts more as a CEO. At St. Petersburg College, nearly every major academic decision rests with the president. I was involved in our latest application for reaccreditation. In fact, I was the faculty chair of our college quality enhancement plan. In that role, I sat in weekly meetings with the president, who managed the entire process for over a year. At a time when accreditation is getting more difficult to achieve and the stakes increasingly get higher, do we really want to consider an applicant who states that he is committed to learn the process on the job? We have over 60,000 students who depend on the integrity of our degrees and certificates. Are we going to tell them that we are going to put them in the hands of someone who is going to learn on the job? I know that it is difficult to say no to friends and neighbors, but you all have a duty to do what is right and fair. To quote Dick Johnston at the end of the committee meeting last week, "This vote, this has been a fair and open process all the way."
Ten seconds.
Please don't let us down.
My name's Jim Killesch. I'm a St. Pete Junior College alumna, alumnus. I want to thank you for your service on the Board of Trustees. It's especially difficult during, to find yourself in the center of the storm like we have today. The most significant decision you'll make in your service on the Board will likely be the selection of the next president. It is a decision that will affect the direction of the college for the next decade. I'm disappointed with the actions of the Selection Committee and agree with the St. Petersburg Times' conclusion that the process was terribly flawed. I remember from my SPJC classes, including history and child psychology, that it's not wise to reward bad behavior. I also remember from my organic chemistry lab experiments, that if your chemicals were tainted, it was impossible to come out with a good solution. You had to go back to a point before the contamination occurred and start over. The Selection Committee took a field of 20-plus applicants and narrowed it to a, to a, to a field of eight semifinalists. There were no signs of errors in the selection of these eight people. It appears that among these eight semifinalists, there are individuals qualified to be the next president of the college. I would ask that the Board of Trustees review the applications of the eight semifinalists and select who they want to interview for the next college president. The task is too important to assign to a committee. Enough time has been spent on this process, it needs to be finalized. I urge you to go back to a point where the applicant pool was not tainted and move forward from there. Thank you.
I'm John Williams, Academic Chair, Natural Science, Clearwater. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees for their hard work on this selection. I want to second everything that Earl Freitas said before me. And I would like to add this. The Board of Trustees set up the selection process. The Presidential Search Committee did their job. They did it openly, fairly, and gave you four well-qualified candidates. The faculty has overwhelmingly indicated they want an academic as their next president. They wanted a person with the experience in an academic environment. Our faculty at Clearwater, our natural science faculty unanimously support this concept. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Board members, my name is George Young Greenley. I'm an Associate Professor of Economics on the Clearwater Campus. And also as a member of the 13-member Presidential Search Committee. I just want to emphasize a couple of things in the processes the Search Committee did. First of all, the task that the Board gave to the Search Committee was to look at all the candidates and vet them as diligently as we could. And we did that process. It was an open application process. Our job was to narrow it down to the best candidates. And I know personally speaking, I looked at every application, I looked at every video at least three times. And the choices that I made were based on what I thought was best to fill the position. The job of the Search Committee was to see, look at as many candidates as possible and narrow it down to the best candidate. I think we did that. It was a very open and democratic process. As the consultant, Mr. Hockaday, said at the end of our meeting, he said of the 70-plus presidential searches that he's done, ours was probably the most open and democratic process that he's ever seen. So I just would implore upon you to accept the recommendations of the Search Committee. Everyone on that Search Committee had their opportunity to speak and we all voted. One of the things that we decided as, as a Search Committee, that any name that we sent to you should have a majority of the members of that Search Committee. And every one of those four people on that, on that final list got at least seven votes of the Search Committee members. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pat Renaud and I'm an administrator at the college. I have a copy of the mission statement. May I pass it out to the Board members?
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
I've written them down this morning. I'm not a very good speaker on the fly, so please keep that in mind. I'm not representing any group or constituency at the college, i.e. other administrators. These are my own words. I love St. Petersburg College. I've worked here for 18 years. And frankly, when I started as a records clerk at the Health Education Center, my intentions were not to stay at the college, at least for not very long. I fell in love with the college, what it stood for, and what it did for our students. Unquestionably, there's a battle going on, a battle for the presidency of St. Petersburg College. As with any battle, if you're in the midst of the battle, there's an enemy. Or if you're observing the battle from the sidelines, there's a bad guy. Okay, so the natural tendency is to ask the questions, who's the enemy or who's the bad guy? Is the enemy a former president? I don't think so. Is the enemy any member of the Board? I don't think so. Is the enemy faculty senate? Once again, I don't think so. In fact, I think to ask these questions, who is the enemy or who is the bad guy, is missing the mark. Rather, I think the more appropriate question is to ask, what is the enemy? I think the enemy is greed, envy, pride, self-promotion, retaliation, divisiveness, and possibly arrogance. It is these unlikable characteristics that we, and that's a collective "we," are battling. In my opinion, the Board needs to read the mission statement of the college. The very first sentence is that we are to provide a learner-centered education for students. I believe that sentence is first because it is the most important thing we can do for our community. In my opinion, we don't need to come to the rescue of any more arts organizations in the community. In my opinion, we don't need to form any more agreements with international organizations. While these are worthy endeavors, they are not fulfilling the most important part of our mission. In my opinion, we need to focus on teaching and learning, which has not had the focus that it so desperately deserves. Thank you.
My name's Trudy Williams. I'm, I've been at the college for 27 years. I've worked both as an English professor and as an academic administrator during those years. I also loved the college. And I was here last week and, you know, was part of the process. During this week, as I have read the paper and the blogs and listened to the conversation and so on, the flavor that I've seen in the press did not represent what I saw last week. But the part that really has concerned me is I think that many people perhaps are losing sight of what's really important. We heard a lot last week in the committee meeting about leadership and the importance of leadership. And I certainly agree that the college does need a really strong leader. But let's look at what a leader does. A leader gets in front of followers who want to follow, who inspires the, the people who work with him or her to pull together to follow in a common direction. The voice I believe that the faculty is trying to have heard is, we want to march behind someone who shares our passion and our commitment to strong academics for our students. I get up and go to work every day, not for the Board, not for the administration, but for my students. And that's what's brought me here every day for 27 years. Let's focus on the students. Thank you.
My name's Rich Merkin Dante. I teach communications in Philosophy at Clearwater, where I also chair the Faculty Governance Organization. I'd like to begin by thanking you for allowing us to speak. I'd also like to thank the opposition, because these are, you know, honest, decent people. And it's just a testimony to the strength of this college, that you have so many people so passionate. I've attended all the BOT meetings, all the Presidential Search Committee meetings leading up to this. I've also, over the years, taught parliamentary procedure to my students. And I always stress two things. First of all, there are two agreements. First of all, you agree to follow a set of procedures. Secondly, you also agree to follow the results that come from those procedures. What happened here was we had a series of procedures. We had an open process. Dr. Hockaday said it was the best example in over 70 searches that he had ever seen of people actually getting to speak. Mr. Johnston described the process of the Presidential Search Committee as excellent. He was very open. He allowed people to speak. Even after the last speaker last Thursday, he said, "Does anyone else want to speak?" Okay, this was an extremely open process. Mr. Brett has said on several occasions that if we honor the process, we will have a fine situation in the end. And I think even though it's contentious, even though it's not harmonious, shall we say, that's not our goal. Our goal is to put reasonable people together and allow them to have a process that is fair. The fair process has concluded. You now have four good names in front of you. Consider what would happen if you changed that process. If you brought in a candidate that is not in line with faculty thinking. If you thrust an unwanted candidate on an unwilling faculty. Consider the survey we presented with you. 93% of the faculty said they wanted higher education credentials. 91% said they wanted either a PhD or an EDD. The Clearwater faculty took a poll after Mr. Baker announced his candidacy, indicating 85% did not want him as president. What will happen over the next couple of weeks? We might have to rent out Tropicana Field for all the people that want to come and discuss this issue if Mr. Baker stays in. So I ask that you consider the process. If the people who want to bring Mr. Baker in have a justified claim, they have to point to something specific in the process that was illegal or inappropriate, and there simply wasn't. I know it's tough to lose, but in this case, I don't think it's a loss. We have four fine candidates before us, two sitting presidents, two high-ranking academic officials in other colleges. Let's choose for them. Let's try to get on board and do the best we can for St. Pete College. Thank you very much.
My name's Lisa Wannamaker. I am a business owner and a resident of St. Pete. And I am an outsider, but I wanted to just give you the view from an outsider a bit. I think that all of what has been said before me is very good, but I'm here to support the contention that you should go back to the original eight candidates. You selected, those candidates were put forth in front of, in front of you. They were good, solid candidates. And sometimes it's not what the facts say or whether the process was tainted or not, but here in the sunshine state, we are often met with what is the perception? And as an outsider and speaking with other friends and business associates, it's this perception that something has been done that is going to taint the process and St. Pete College will forever have this black mark on their reputation when the new president is selected. And if, if all you have to do is just go back to those eight candidates to erase the perception that something wasn't right, then that to me seems like a very easy solution. And I encourage you to do that. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Klein. I'm a professor at St. Petersburg Junior College on the Gibbs Campus. Thanks for allowing me to speak this morning. You have some tough decisions to make. And I would pray that the same God that guided our country's founding fathers will give you wisdom and vision that he gave them. And you're going to need it. Now, do we have a great faculty at St. Petersburg College? Yes. Are they always right? No. Are they underpaid? Yes. Is every community college in Florida underpaid? Probably. Is that your fault? No. Is that Dr. Cutler's fault? No. And all these people who are trashing Dr. Cutler, just remember this. His peers chose him as the most outstanding college, community college president in America. So let's quit trashing a man who built this college and spent 30 years doing it. Now, incidentally, don't read everything you read in the paper. When the reporter called Dr. Cutler when he decided to retire and asked him who he thought should be the president of this college, he gave the superintendent of the school. They kept pressing him and they said, "Well, what about Mayor Baker?" And he said, "Yes, Mayor Baker would make a good candidate." And the next morning in the paper, you read, "Dr. Cutler endorses Mayor Baker." Listen, that wasn't true. Does he endorse Mayor Baker? I would say, yes, he does. But it was blown out of proportion. Right after that, on every campus, there was a hate mail, email for Baker. Do away with Baker. I got it. I objected to it. I thought it was unethical and I made my, I made my views. No, not only did the faculty get that email, but so did the student body president. And she objected to the same thing. Now listen, I ask you to honestly examine the makeup of the Selection Committee. Mr. Ken Burke had already said, "I want an academic. I do not want someone who's proven his leadership elsewhere." So he's naturally going to sit on that board. And he's a forceful guy. The faculty, they want an academic. So you've got four votes right there against Rick Baker before he ever steps out of the block. Then, each one of you gets to choose one. Who does Ken Burke choose? He chooses Susan Lavala, who publicly has said she was put on there to oppose Rick Baker. So now you've got five votes against Baker before, the process hasn't even started, before you even get out of the blocks. I ask you, is that fair? I hope you're all following me. I don't think it's fair at all. Now, the amazing thing to me is that Baker stayed in this race as long as he did. You need to reexamine the whole thing and you need not, trust me, you need not to exclude one man. When I was in Turkey, my deputy had a sign on his desk. And it said, "There is no right way to do the wrong thing." And I urge you today to do the right thing.
Thank you.
I'm a student of SBC College. I think when I first come to SBC, I feel like this is like a community college. But as, as the time passed by, I fell in love with this college and that's why I pay more attention to this presidential election. And I, as a student, I really appreciate what Dr. Cutler had bring to our college. But he has been for our president for over past 25 years. And I think it's, it's the time for us to move on, to have, to welcome a new president, to have new policies for our students. We, me, as a student, I really, really, really care as a president who can really care about our feelings. And we want a president with a PhD, with the education in their background, with the heart of our whole college, including faculty and students, including them all. So I, I really, really do support and have faith in our Presidential Research Committee. I do believe that they have their heart to, in, going to the right direction. They know what they're doing. So I think I fully, fully support that our Presidential Committee's support, Presidential Committee's results. I think they make it right directions. And I think it's time for our college to move on, to have a new chapter, and to... on, to have a new chapter, and to welcome the next challenge, you know, to open a new door for our college. And I really do all of our Board of Trustees' efforts, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Megan Anne Girwa, and I am a student of SBC, as well as an SGA president, and I had the privilege of serving on the president's cabinet in the summer of 2009. And I was very disturbed by an email that I received saying that what the Presidential Search Committee did was somewhat tainted and undermined. The Presidential Search Committee had the college's best interests in choosing three to four candidates for presidents of St. Petersburg College. If the Presidential Search Committee did not have the best interests of the college, they would not have chosen three to four great finalists. They are qualified, they have educational backgrounds, they have PhDs. What the Presidential Search Committee, I believe, was fair and in any way not tainted at all, and that's what I wanted to say. So, thank you.
Well, I am the other Latvalla, Jack Latvalla. I live in Clearwater, and I had the privilege of serving this community for eight years in the Florida Senate. And during that time, I think I got well acquainted, not only with the president that served the college, who I opposed a number of times, but also the job of being a community college or a college president in Florida. You know, it's a real complex job. It's not just academics. It's politics, it's fundraising, and it's administration of a huge budget and a huge staff. And I think that, you know, with all due respect, that's a very challenging environment for a new president to walk into. Yes, you know, someone who doesn't have one of those components has some on-the-job training to do it. Someone who doesn't have academics has on-the-job training to get that academics. Someone who doesn't have fundraising has on-the-job training needed to get the fundraising, or the Florida politics. You know, I saw a number of community college presidents who came into Florida from out of state, and it took them several years to get up to speed just with the politics of the budget process and the legislature and all of those things that go into it. So, you know, I'm here to support the idea of having a broad base for this board to choose from. But I was concerned by three things I've heard this morning. One is, I'm concerned by the emphasis on the past president. To me, the past president doesn't have anything to do with this process. We're not here today to judge the past president, or to, he's not an applicant for the job. So I think we're here to look at the candidates for the job in the future. The second thing I heard was a lot about what the academics and what the faculty wants. The faculty wants this, the faculty voted that way, voted 85% on that. There are a number of stakeholders for this college, and I think it's important to remember that. There's the faculty, and they're a very important stakeholder. There's the students, and they're a very important stakeholder. But there's also the community, which is a very, very important stakeholder in this process. And finally, I think that what concerned me about the process was the confusing nature of the way the vote was taken. And I had to have it explained to me two or three times, even quite figure it out, and how the elimination was done, or double elimination, or whatever it was. But one thing I do know, the same process was not used at the second meeting that was used at the first meeting. The first meeting, there was a vote taken, and the list was made based on the votes, and they chopped it at eight. The second meeting, the vote was taken, they didn't take them in order, they took two, then they went back to a different list and took a third one, and then back to a different list and took a fourth one. I think it's up to you.
Thank you.
My name is Daryl Schrader. I've been a professor here since 1977. I just recently retired. I was under Carl Cutler's oppressive regime for a long time. This is about the past president. For decades, I've watched Dick Johnson, Joe Lang, and Carl Cutler maneuver to keep Carl Cutler in complete control, along with them, of this college, so the faculty could not do what they should be doing. The way they can now keep power is to get their friend, Rick Baker, to be president of the college. Everything stays the same, everything's still locked down. The faculty, the community overwhelmingly want an academic, do the right thing.
I did not plan on speaking this morning, so I hope you'll forgive me if my comments are a little bit disjointed, but I wanted to share with you some thoughts I had as I was sitting in the back of the room, listening to some of these comments. But first of all, let me thank you for what you're doing. I've been involved with two superintendent searches during my ten years on the Pinellas County School Board, and I know that you have a formidable task in front of you, and there's no answer that you're going to come up with that's going to please everyone, and that you are in a very challenging position right now. But a very important position, and that is why you have been selected to serve the community in this way. I want to bring the focus back, like Senator Latvalla, back to the community, because you serve that role. You are not just the leaders of St. Pete College, but you are the community's representatives to this very important institution in our community. And you have to serve dual roles, that is, reflecting the important desires of your internal community, that's, you know, well represented today here by your faculty and some of your students, but you also have to represent the external community, the taxpayers who support this institution, and the community in which this institution plays such an important role. And both of those communities, I believe, but particularly the external community, have a lot at stake at this process being perceived as, and I don't want to make any comments on the process, I was not at your previous meetings, but the community has a very big stake in the process being perceived as fair. And right now, the broader community, I don't think, shares that perception. And probably even more importantly, whoever becomes, at the end of this process, the new leader of St. Pete College, it's incumbent upon you that they come in in the most positive manner possible, so that they can begin a new era in St. Pete College history and create a great institution for everyone. And to handicap that person to say, "Well, they came in because someone was excluded, or because there were these questions about procedures," is not fair to anyone. It's not fair to a candidate you may exclude. It's not fair to the candidate you ultimately select, to give them that kind of handicap coming in. So I ask you to take a look at the broader perspective, to go back to the basics, to look at the process, to look at your original rankings, include all candidates who rose to the top of that list, and proceed here in the most inclusive way. Consider all of your candidates, so that we can start off a new era at St. Pete College in a way that your community can be proud and support your institution. Thank you all. I'm sorry, Nancy Bostock.
My name is Robert Capusta. I'm a citizen of St. Petersburg and have lived there for 20 years. Over the last 20 years, I have seen St. Petersburg College grow and its reputation expand, and it has really become an asset to the community of Pinellas County and St. Petersburg. Today, there is a risk that that asset will be tainted because of the way the selection process has come about. I think it's obvious that everyone here in this room cares deeply about St. Petersburg College. I think that, whether it's true or not, we can just disagree, there is a perception that the process of the selection committee was very politicized, was unfair, and was tainted. As a result, if you just keep the four candidates or so that have been recommended, they already have a, there's a strike against those four candidates, no matter who would be selected, because, again, the perception, as evidenced by the newspaper articles, by the St. Pete Times editorial, is that, you know, that's not an all-inclusive pool. And as a result, I think the best solution, and as the St. Pete Times said, you either have to start all over again, or try to clean up the process. The best way to do that would be to go back to the eight candidates that the selection committee all unanimously, I won't say unanimously, but agreed to on the first time they were voting, and then after that, the process fell apart, and you need to go back to the point in time where everyone had agreed on those eight candidates and select from those eight candidates. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Teresa Geiger. I'm a math faculty at the Clearwater campus. I've been at the college for 22 years. I have communicated with all of you by email, and I wanted, one last time, to reiterate the point that I have made previously, which I really haven't heard voiced here today fully, and that is, yes, as Mr. Latvalla said, we need somebody who has strong leadership in the community and in the political arena, because that is what it takes, not only in Florida, but at any higher education institution these days. The other piece of the pie is that we need somebody who understands the role of academics, because we are primarily an academics institution. And my suggestion is that you pick from among the candidates that we have. If we have two college presidents who have been successful in their positions on the list, and others who are in high leadership positions, I would assume, but you can confirm whether or not they are strong in both of these areas. We need a president who has strong leadership, both within Pinellas County, the state of Florida, and the political arena, and somebody who is also strong and understands the role of faculty. We are the frontline troops, and our students, who are our clients, our customers, whatever you want to call them, who are our primary objective in being here and what we're here for. We need to look from among whatever candidates you choose to look at, it's not a question of one or the other, it's a question of both. And in today's society, we need that more than ever, and I encourage you to make a decision that will bring somebody to the table who can function strongly and capably in both of these areas. Thank you.
My name's Ed Montanari. I've been a resident of St. Petersburg since 1976, and you all have a big job to do, and I respect you, and thank you for your service to St. Petersburg College and the city of St. Petersburg and Pinellas County. I don't see how any reasonable person that has read the newspaper, watched on the news, can say that this process has not been flawed in some point along the way. Multiple revotes, and multiple changing, changes to the process along the way, it makes, it appear like the search committee kept changing votes until they got the outcome that they wanted, and then the process was stopped. And I think the Board of Trustees needs to address that issue, and it's going to be a difficult job to do. We all are here for the same reason. We all want what's best for St. Petersburg College, and we need a strong leader with a skill set that's very diverse to lead the college into the future. And I agree with what Senator Latvalla said about the stakeholders. Clearly, the faculty is a large group of stakeholders here at St. Petersburg College, and I trust them tremendously. Also, the students of St. Petersburg College. But the community is the largest stakeholder. I want to make it, I want to give an example of another college back in 1865 that was struggling. It was a small college in Lexington, Virginia. It had a, it was bankrupt at the time, and the Board of Trustees was struggling to try to keep the doors open of this college. They searched, and they decided to bring an outsider in to lead the college, and that college was a small college named Washington College in Virginia. They brought in General Robert E. Lee to lead that college and to pick up the pieces and take it to the future. Washington and Lee is a college that now is one of the most respected colleges in Virginia. I think we need to look at the, all, go back, look at the whole set of candidates that you were, that you were at back before the process was changed. I think you ought to go back to the final, the eight candidates and proceed from there. Thank you.
My name is David Manson, and I'm a professor of music at St. Petersburg College for 18 years, and before that, six years I taught at Indiana State University. Within one week of the announcement of the retirement of the former president, I talked with a friend of mine, an attorney in Tab, who told me that Mr. Baker was a shoo-in for the job, it was a done deal. And I think, realistically, we know there's been a very aggressive campaign for the former mayor. I personally, I respect the mayor, I like him, I voted for him as mayor of the city of St. Petersburg. But in this situation, the college is in a position where it needs to heal. There are many problems that need to be addressed. I've stated to you that the administrative culture at the college needs some serious repair. I think that an experienced educator and administrator who is familiar with professional standards will be able to return the college to a state of equilibrium. We need that for our students, we need it for the community, and while I respect Mr. Baker greatly, I don't believe that he is the man for this job. Thank you very much.
My name is Darlene Westberg, and I don't know if I can get through this, because I'm very ill, but I am here to represent several factions. I'm a former student here, I graduated from here, my children went to school here, I'm a faculty member here, I was an adjunct for 16 years. This is the job I have wanted my whole life, and I love it. And I have come to every board meeting, and I have come to every one of the search committee meetings, and I have viewed extensively the video, because I had to leave early the last one. And for anyone who was not at that meeting to say that the process was tainted is extremely unfair to the search committee, to the board members. The process was agreed on by the search committee, the entire process, including the changing of the votes. And the way those votes were changed were to ensure that there was a majority of the search committee members voting for each of the people that went forward. So my only saying is, to anyone who thinks that the process was tainted, we know that things get twisted in the newspaper. Take the time, really research what happened. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I'm Barbara Heck, and I had not expected to speak. I'm a native of St. Petersburg. I also spent one year at junior college, as did my parents, my aunts, my uncles, a number of my cousins and everything. I'm a community activist, and I'm here to say that the community is one part and should be one part of your decision. We have a wonderful group here today that represents academia, and thank goodness for them, because I learned some wonderful, wonderful principles when I went there. We have the community that's part of the process, and we also have the students that are part of the process. And I know that everyone has spoken on one part or another part of it. Perception is a big part of the issue, and definitely, as a community activist, I do know how strong perception can weigh on things that we do going forward. When, as an example, when my granddaughter does something that was really bad, we do what's called a do-over. And I'm not saying that the process was bad or anything. What I'm saying is, the appropriate thing now might be to go back to the original eight candidates and to start there and just make your decision from that group. That way, everybody has an opportunity, that selection was made, it was appropriate. But I will remind you that the community does have a big stake in this, and we don't hear as much, because a lot of us are at work and have taken time off to come here to just say, "We have a big stake in this, we want to push..." taken time off to come here to just say, we have a big stake in this. We want to push as much as possible St. Pete's College. We have a wonderful opportunity now, with SRI down there, with NOAA, with all the opportunities that are being brought into St. Petersburg, to merge with St. Pete College and to expand the types of things that you're able to do. Take this opportunity to do the outreach and everything, but also listen to what the citizens are telling you at the same time. Our voice may not be as loud as academia. We may not have as many people here. But let me tell you, we are just as passionate about it. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and good luck, and thank you for what you're doing.
Good morning. My name's Evan Jones, and I'm a local businessman. I'm here to speak to the fairness of the so-called process, or I should say, the so-called fairness of the selection process, and not necessarily the vetting process and the candidates that have come forward, because I think you have outstanding candidates. But since the vote, so many have mentioned the government and sunshine as being a qualification of fairness. And I'm here to say that it's not necessarily so. You can have a lot of individuals here that can influence a process in an undue kind of way. And I think that's what happened here. The process, I don't believe, was fair when the voting changed during the voting process and the selection of the candidates. When certain individuals are reported to come from the back of the room and speak vehemently against a candidate, when the voting process has changed many different times within the final vote, I think there's a problem there. This being said, I'd also like to talk to you about the importance of diversity. I don't want to speak against those people with doctorate degrees and education and what have you, but education in and to itself is not a homogeneous endeavor. Education is intended to be diverse. It's intended to have a variety of qualifications of individuals seeking higher education. The challenge today with federal and state governments being much more involved in our educational systems and the goal of putting people back to work, there's a lot more that has to be done in integrating and coordinating not just what's going on in higher education, but within the community itself. And St. Petersburg College has done that in its history. And it's been a local institution, and none of the candidates that you have have a local, are local, that understand the community, understand critical issues that may be before St. Pete College, and coordinating St. Pete College with, say, USF Bayboro Campus. We have a beautiful Job Center on the south side of St. Petersburg that those efforts are going to have to be coordinated. What I would like you to do is go back, because what is the harm in considering the eight candidates that you were looking at and making sure? I mean, I'm here to speak for unity of the process. And that unity of the process says, you should go back, do it again, and then come up with the final candidates. Let the community be satisfied with that outcome. That's the right thing to do. Thank you.
My name is Robin Dunkson, and I teach on the Clearwater Campus. And I have been in attendance to most of the meetings. And I do believe that there was a fair process from the very beginning, and that everybody did have the opportunity to say what they feel that they should have said at that given time. And as my colleagues before me have stated, those who have been on the selection committee, we need to respect the wishes of those that were on the committee. There have been a lot of people here that have spoken from the heart. There's no doubt about it. We had students that had to overcome quite a bit and a lot to get the nerve to get up here and speak. One of them had English as a second language, which from my perspective means an awful lot. We have community members that have gotten up here and spoken and said that this whole process was tainted. They were not in this room throughout the whole entire process. It only seemed to matter to them when those that they really wanted to have in the final eight to come to be part of the final four were not in the process. Then they come out of the woodwork. I think we need to respect the process that was put into place. That is the right thing to do here. There has been a lot of controversy at this institution. I have been a part of this institution for 22 years. We have, right now, the opportunity to make things better. Yes, this institution is a grand institution. We have a great reputation. But we can grow, and we can be better, and we can serve the needs of those that we should be, and that is our students. The mission is to serve the students. I also want you to consider this. We represent the entire county of Pinellas County, not just St. Petersburg, the city. Thank you.
Dr. Kevin Morgan. I teach philosophy at the Seminole Campus. I would just like to point out the, I was at both meetings. I saw the process. It was in the sunshine. Democracy, when things are really a democratic process, democracy is messy. People disagree. I think because the process was in the open, was in the open air, that was the strength of the process. That gave it integrity. That gave it support. Because democracy can be messy, we have these problems of perception. We have the media, the articles. When you read the most recent article in the St. Pete Times, since everyone's referring to perception, that same article that cast dispersions on the process also said it would be a bigger travesty and a bigger dilemma for the Board of Trustees to not recognize the selection committee. And to insert another candidate outside of this process would cause even bigger shame. And we have to realize, sure, local is great, but we're also in a national spotlight. We have to answer to SACS, the Southern School of Association. And we can't simply do our local politics and ignore the national spotlight. So we, as a faculty, support the selection committee. We support the Board of Trustees. And that's all I have to say.
Are there any other speakers who would like to come forward? Here comes one. Okay, is this, I think this might be the last one.
My name's Mark Dawson. I was a graduate of college, and it's nice to know that there's at least three of us still refer to it as JC. I was going to come up and just echo what Jack Latvala said. I thought he said it well, until Barbara Heck came up and introduced the concept of a do-over. I think, you know, we've heard the word "fair," and I think maybe without controversy, maybe it would be a different, a different perspective if you could dial back when there were, when there were eight candidates at that, at that point in the process. The only other thing I would say, you know, we talked a lot about credentials, PhDs, and stuff like that. The college is a big business. It has a lot of employees. It has a lot of customers. It has a lot of support from the community, certainly. And if you, if you forget for a second, I don't know anything about colleges, but if you look at it as a business, and you look at benchmarking that against other best-in-class businesses, they're not all led by folks that have a pedigree. Microsoft would come to mind. So anyway, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Cornett. I teach in the Tarpon Springs Campus, and I've lived in Pinellas County since 1950. So I've seen all kinds of things go. The only thing that's really concerned me today is how often the media's been brought up as something that should make our mind into our decision. And I'm not sure that the St. Petersburg Times should be part of the decision-making process. I think the best people involved here are the members of the board, who have watched the whole process from beginning to end, and who need to make this decision on their own, for themselves, because they're the ones that are most involved in the day-to-day life of this college and have been forever. The one thing that I see also, though, is it would be nice to have a balance. It would be nice to be somebody that could handle both the educational side of the House and the political side, because those are so paramount for anybody who deals with the budgets that we have to work with today. Thank you.
I know you're tired. I'm tired, too. I didn't plan to be here this early in the morning. But I'm here because it matters. I never in my life dreamed I would be addressing the District Board of Trustees. It's like going to Mount Olympus.
You need to lower your expectations.
Mr. Brett, I hope not. My name is Delia Palermo. And everybody has come here and said, I represent this group. I'm this. I'm that. I want to tell you, I teach, and that has been my life's passion. But my husband and I own two successful businesses. I know about the community. I also spend a good bit of my time as a community activist. And I can tell you, I also represent people that aren't here today. You want to talk about diversity? Where are the Hispanics in the audience? A lot of the people who benefit from the college, they're not here today to tell you what they want, because they have to work. It isn't easy for them to go to college. So when we get up here to talk and tell you what we think, I hope you realize that the people whose opinion matters are not just those of us in this room. It's also all the people who can't come. So please don't think that because a few people stand here and say, I represent the community. I own a business. Don't think that there aren't people out there that have a stake in this and that can't come today. So let me just say, mi casa es su casa. This school is my school, and it's your school. And you're here to represent all of us, even those who can't be here. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
We wouldn't hire a police commissioner who had no law enforcement experience, or a fire commissioner who had no firefighting experience. In the same way, we need a president who has education experience, so that can inform his or her best decisions. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? If not, I would like to. We're just going to give a minute or two for everyone out in the hallway to come in and find a seat. Sir, could you let the folks out there know that we're about to start? Thank you very much. Okay. I want to thank all of you for, for being here today and for offering your comments. And I also want to thank you for being respectful of everyone who is speaking. Passionate voices, and we appreciated all of your opinions. Thank you very, very much. Before we move on with the agenda, Mr. Gibbons has asked me to recognize him.
Mr. McKenzie, is it okay?
Yes.
When the process started, I recused myself from the process because of my relationship with that then Mayor Baker. And that was on the advice of my personal counsel. And I think that Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Lang will both tell you that they reviewed the statute as well as my personal counsel. And I will listen to my personal counsel, no matter what, because he is in charge of keeping me out of jail, number one. And number two, is because that's what you pay your attorney to do, is to advise you on what is proper and what is right. I had that conflict. I no longer have that conflict. I'm no longer recusing myself, because the individual that I had a relationship with that was a part of the process is no longer a part of the process. And at advice of my counsel, I can now re-enter the process, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McKenzie, would you like to offer an opinion on that?
No, I agree. It's an ethical decision by him on the advice of his counsel. He no longer feels he has a conflict of interest. He has every right to rejoin the process.
Okay. Is this something we need to vote on, or is it just done?
No, no, it's his call.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have item three on our agenda. Mr. Johnston, I believe you have a recommendation of presidential candidate finalists from the search committee.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, but I have a few comments to make prior to that. And I'm going to read them, because I think it's important that, given a lot of thought to this, I've, it's gone through my mind since last Thursday of what we did as a search committee and how we did it. And I know there's a lot of differences of opinion. And I'm going to try to keep my opinion out of this, because I knew that when I was asked and agreed to chair the search committee, I was obligated to follow the board's wishes and rules, which included an open process, and followed the rules established by the board under Dr. Hockaday's leadership. I assumed I was not to try to control the outcome or try to influence any other member's votes in this process. It did appear that not all board members felt this way. I worked very closely with Dr. Hockaday and followed the procedures as he recommended. And like it's been said, I think we had a very fair and very open process. But I do want to add later here some comments about how the process is viewed by different people. The search committee had been briefed many times that they were to follow the board rules for this process. This process referred to again and again by me and Dr. Hockaday. As a reference to all, we started out with 48 or so candidates. Dr. Hockaday then narrowed the group down to 25, all of whom met the criteria established by the board. Of this remaining number five with Of this remaining number five withdrew. The candidates were then reduced to eight by the committee. All of this was reported at our last board meeting. At our last board meeting, Mr. Gibbons requested some information from Dr. Hockaday and asked that Dr. Hockaday attend this meeting. Excuse me. It was recommended that Mr. Gibbons call Dr. Hockaday and get his answers in that way, which I understand he did and was satisfied. I think that answered all the questions and concern at the last board meeting. The process going forward after the aforementioned selection committee resolve dictated shortening the committee, the candidate pool from eight to three to five. CDs were requested by, and maybe they're DVDs, requested by Dr. Hockaday's from each of the eight, requesting answers to three questions provided by him. These CDs were distributed to each member of the search committee in time for each member to review them as many times as they wished. Our last meeting of the search committee was held February 4th at noon in the epicenter. All members attended. Shortly after the meeting started, a committee member made a motion to allow members of the audience to speak. This was seconded, and four attendees were allowed to speak for three minutes each, just very much like this meeting. Shortly thereafter, we started our voting on the eight candidates. The search committee followed the same voting procedures recommended by Dr. Hockaday, as was used in our previous meeting. This vote produced 11 votes for both Keenan and Law, and six for Baker. There were others at five. That was when Mr. Gibbons rushed to the podium from the back of the room and wanted to speak as a private person. I questioned whether he should be allowed to speak, since he had recused himself from this process. It's not that I didn't want everyone to speak, but I didn't want him to say something he shouldn't say and get himself into trouble. I'm not his legal counsel, but I was trying to look after him. Legal counsel said it was permissible for him to speak as a private person. Since Mr. Gibbons was given the opportunity, hence Mr. Gibbons was given the opportunity to address the group. What effect his comments had on the search committee members, I was unable to determine. However, shortly after his comments, the committee decided it did not want to send any candidate to the board if they did not have a majority of the committee's votes, which was a change in our voting method set up by Dr. Hockaday and approved for previous meetings. Also, in all of this meeting, most of the committee verbally insisted upon the need for a PhD in education to be formally considered by the board. I would like to point out that the original board guidelines specified, specifically stated, that the PhD in education was not mandatory. Below are the candidates, are the committee's current recommendations for the candidates for SPC presidency. As chairman, I am compelled to point out that even though the trustees had adopted and agreed to follow the process suggested by the committee's consultant, Dr. Hockaday, at its final meeting, the committee proceeded in midstream through a series of votes to abandon that process in both the area of voting method and need for PhD in education. Adoption of a completely different process thereby excluded a candidate who would have been one of the three-person slate. Neither of these changes were brought, neither of these changes were brought fully up until after Dr., after Mr. Gibbons rushed to the podium to speak. The odd policy detour came as a result of a seven to six vote. After further votes ensured, the following four names were moved forward to the board. And I'll present them, not in any particular order, but Bill Law, Thomas Keegan, DK Walters, and Paula Gennettzfeld. This is the report of the chairman of the selection committee.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. So we have the four names before us, and if I understand rules, Mr. McKenzie, correct me on this if I'm wrong. This is a motion from a subcommittee that does not require a second here?
If it's, if the motion is a recommendation by the chair of the subcommittee-
And it is.
-to go forward and accept those four names.
Yeah.
I think on behalf of the search committee, it is my obligation to put forth these four names.
Then that's, does not require a second.
So we'll move right to discussion, please. Mr. Gibbons.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. And thank you, Dick, for highlighting something. Number one, let me just clear some things up. I did not run to the microphone. I think the people that were here, Earl and some other folks, will tell you I walked very calmly from the back of the room to the microphone. Number two, I did say that the two people, and I will, if you like, if anybody would like a copy of the record, I think it will reflect that I did say that there were two people that clearly had 11 votes. Never spoke about the third individual, never said that Mayor Baker, I never said the third individual, never brought that up. What I said was, there were very clearly two people who needed to be sent on to the board, because they had 11 of the 13 people on the committee that were with them, or that had voted on them. Mind you, remember, that was after you all had voted. Number two, you left something out of your notes, and I know that sometimes that happens. The seven to six thing came up after Commissioner Latvala said that the third person did not have the majority of this committee. At that point, I left. I wasn't even in the room after you all started to vote and change the rules. I left, because she brought that up, not me. That was a member of your committee. And then I suggest, I guess, I don't know, because I, again, I left, that you all changed the rules to vote. It was a very open process. I know Mr. Brett, and I've known him for years, likes tennis. Mr. Brett, give me a few minutes. Hopefully, I will not keep this too long. I'm an athlete, played football from 8:21, and learned a lot of lessons from athletics. One of the lessons I, the greatest lessons I've learned in life have probably been from my grandparents and my parents. But there's one individual I can't leave out, and his name is Cecil Butch Odom. And there's probably some people in this room who know Cecil Butch Odom. He was my Little League coach, he's now the president of the St. Pete Little Green Devils. Coach Odom prepared me for life. I'll never forget some things he taught me, and his, a couple of things he taught me was, I made a C and had six As, and he sent me home, didn't let me play in the championship game. That made education important to me. But the biggest lesson that I learned from playing athletics was this, was Coach Odom would prepare us on Saturday mornings, we'd get there about 8 o'clock, we retired the trophy, we won three championships in four years, so I learned a lot about winning. The lessons I learned were the games that we lost. And the games that we lost, that he found his teachable moments with all of us. And the one thing that he would always say to us, is there's no team that could beat you guys if you show up to play that day. And he was right. And what he would always tell me, and the rest of the captains, is you got to prepare your team for the bad calls. We lost some games because of bad calls. He wasn't upset about that. And when we lost those games, that was perfectly fine, we could handle it, because we put and left everything on the field. But one thing he would say at the end of that is, when you expect bad calls, know this, they can't change the lines on the field. The lines are always the same. The 50 is always the 50, the touchdown is always a touchdown, the out-of-bounds is always the out-of-bounds. Mr. Brett, you set a great process, the lines didn't change. The people played the game inside the box, and that's where you play a game. I know you like tennis, the ball has to hit inside the lines. I respected your process, I think you put a good process together, but like Coach Odom used to tell us, it's played within the boundaries. The game was played, whether it's the game of life, or other things, or a presidential search, the boundaries were laid out very clearly, I think, by our chairperson. And I think that the chair, that the people on that committee played within the boundaries that they had. And I think that you have to move forward with a process that was fair and equitable for all people. Because if you do not, even the St. Pete Times, I was glad that one of the individuals that got up and said, that the St. Pete Times can talk about the process being flawed, I have very broad shoulders, I don't worry about what the Times writes, because let me tell you something, I'm the son of a Baptist minister, he gets up every morning, as I do, and pray for me. So I know I'm protected from head to toe. So I don't worry about that. But on these broad shoulders, you have to do what's right. And what is right is there is a fair, equitable process. And once you start opening a Pandora's Box, what happens to the other 20 or so candidates that have been kicked out? We have to allow all of them back in. And I think it makes a mockery of the process. And so, Mr. Chair, I commend you on the process you set forward, and I will tell you that I do agree with Mr. Johnston. At the end of his committee, I wasn't there, but I'm glad somebody said it. He said it was a fair and open process. I'm glad all these people came out today to speak, but it wasn't the day that they needed to speak. We've had, as far as I know, there have been multiple times where the public could come in and speak. I chose to take the opportunity to do that when the public was allowed to speak. I respect a lot of people in this room, and none more than Senator Latvala, I will tell you. Because Jack will stand up when right is right, and he'll stand up when he believes wrong is wrong. And I think today, that the process has been played out in the lines that you set forth, and we have to move forward.
Very good. Any discussions, Ms. Phil Rock?
Well, I just want to say, I respect the search committee, but I want you all to know that I've been inundated with calls for the community, from the community. And I'm sorry, more of them haven't been here today, but they're, they are, they are pretty, they were pretty vocal about the process. But I do respect what happened.
Mr. Burke?
Since there's been so much discussion on process, I want to go back to the process from the start. This group, our board, got together to decide what we wanted in a search consultant. That was one of our first challenges. And we put a lot of thought into that. And we picked an experienced search consultant who did 72 college searches in Dr. Hockaday. He has an excellent reputation. And we basically put our, and we told him, you're going to be our CEO of this search, and you're going to help direct us through this search, and we're going to follow your lead. And we didn't talk about how the process was going to work as a board, we said what the outcomes should be, that we should have three to five candidates deliver it to the board. And then we said, through him, through a session, when we hired Dr. Hockaday, after interviewing the various search consultants, Dr. Hockaday came in, and we went through a process of the qualifications for our college president. And we approved those. I descended from those, because I had a more limited scope of qualifications. Kind of goes back to, for those lawyers who've been around a long time, you used to be able to run for judge without being a lawyer. That didn't make it a, that didn't mean if the person had the law degree, that you held it against them, that just meant that, that you could still run for judge, even if you weren't a lawyer. And that changed in 1978. And the state still has two judges who aren't lawyers, serving in it. And, you know, so we set a minimum criteria there as to what we wanted as our qualified candidate during that process. Each of these meetings was completely open to the public. Everyone, and there was never a time where we didn't ask anyone from the audience who wished to speak, we didn't restrict them in any way. Those opportunities were given. And then, it was decided at that same meeting, the creation of the search committee. The creation of the search committee took place on Dr. Hockaday's recommendation about the composition. He didn't say names, he said composition. And we adopted that. We adopted almost every, matter of fact, we adopted every recommendation that Dr. Hockaday, our outside consultant, our expert in this field, gave us. And then the search committee started meeting. At the first meeting, we had one rule. You were to bring a list of eight names with you to the meeting, out of the 20-some that we were given resumes for. We received 40-some applications. Dr. Hockaday's job was to take the ones out of that pool who did not meet the criteria we set up. So basically, what Dr. Hockaday gave us were 22 qualified candidates. So if you say, anytime we voted, that meant we excluded a qualified candidate, because I've heard that, oh, you purposely excluded a qualified candidate. Well, every vote was, they were all qualified, under the criteria we set up. The committee only dealt with qualified candidates. I think that's very important. It was not our determination as to which one was qualified and which one was not qualified. Dr. Hockaday determined which one of the candidates who applied were qualified candidates, and there were 22 qualified candidates. I think that's very important, because everyone was a qualified candidate, and so then it became the determination of each committee member, which had the credentials which best matched up for St. Petersburg College, out of all these qualified candidates. And that was an individual responsibility. We didn't talk about it at each meeting. We didn't say, "Let's go through each person's resume and tell us all what you think, their pluses and minuses," which actually, I thought maybe going into the process beforehand, maybe there would be more conversation, but there wasn't. We came prepared to that meeting to vote on eight people as an individual decision, and everyone did that, and took that very seriously. At that meeting, we ended up with nine people. We didn't end up with eight people, we ended up with nine people. Because two candidates at the end had a tie, and so it was just determined that rather than revote on those last two, we just add a person. So if I guess those people who are critics of the process, they'll say, "Oh, you changed the rules there, you changed the rules." No, we just said, you know, we, part of the process was, that's a search committee's decision. As to, gosh, we didn't expect an outcome which wasn't clear, you know, with two people at the end, the eighth spot, so we said, just let's put both of them. What's the big deal, we'll have nine people. Then one dropped out. So that made it easy, it made it back out to eight people. And so the search committee, again, got together, and we, after we were given the videos of those eight people, and watched the videos. And we were told to come to the meeting. Now, this was the second rule that we were given by Dr. Hockaday. This is the only, the second rule he gave us. He said, "Come to that meeting with a list of four people to vote on." Those were the only two rules that Dr. Hockaday gave us. Vote for eight people at the first meeting, vote for four people at the second meeting. And everyone came to that meeting with their list of four people. Before that meeting, because there was a discussion at a board meeting, again, an open meeting, that we'd be selecting three to five to send to the board, I'm thinking, we're voting on four people, how do we get to three to five? What's the process involved with that? So I wrote Dr. Hockaday, and I asked him prior to the last meeting. And this is his response. "Ken, the number of names that each member is bringing forward to the February 4th meeting is simply a number, that to get the choices to the board. The number four seems appropriate, as it falls in the range of the three to five candidates the board of trustees asked for. The names will be listed alphabetically on the board. A check for each vote of each committee member will be placed by the appropriate name. The candidates then will be ranked by votes, one through eight. It then becomes the business of the committee to decide how many names go forward, three, or four, or five. It becomes the business of the committee," I want to emphasize that, "to determine the number that goes forward." Usually, the decision is made on the number of votes. For example, if the votes drop sharply after the third-ranked person, the committee would probably send only three people. If the votes cluster around the top five candidates, the committee would probably send five candidates forward. And I hope you all listen very carefully to this next line, "Whatever happens in the process should happen on a majority vote. This is what the process protects." I'd be pleased to say all this at the meeting, if you'd like, Jeff. This is the exact process that we followed, the one that Dr. Hockaday set forward here in this email. Every time, we had a procedure vote here, and we had several procedure votes. The first one was made and seconded to only send two candidates to the board, because there was a clear drop-off between the top two candidates and the other candidates. What Dr. Hockaday mentioned, his number was three. That vote lost, seven to six. The majority ruled on that. The next motion was made by former Mayor Alrick, to send the top three candidates to the board. That motion was seconded, and it was defeated. That motion was seconded, and it was defeated. The process worked as Dr. Hockaday's saying, "We need a majority for the process to work." So far, the majority wasn't there. Then I made a motion. And if you watched tape of that meeting, I was very clear in saying, "I'm putting this motion forward to keep our business moving." I didn't say this was a perfect motion, matter of fact, as I was saying it, I was asking for help for people to make it a better motion. And I said, since, following Dr. Hockaday's advice, since we had two favorite candidates who clearly were on top, let's send those two, and let's vote on two more out of the cluster, because that's the term he used, cluster, of the people who got six votes, which is one person, Mayor Baker, and the people who got five votes, which were four people, I believe. So I said, "Out of that pool of three people, let's have us all vote on two of those." That motion carried nine to three. Mayor O'Rick, you voted for that motion, that procedure motion. And it's following the exact advice that Dr. Hockaday gave us. Whatever happens in the process should happen on a majority vote. This is what the process protects. So we moved forward with that, and we all voted. And when we voted, one name received a majority vote, and then two names received a tie vote. And so we said, "Let's move forward the name that received the majority, majority of votes, and let's recast the votes for those two who are tied." That motion was made by Mr. Greenlee from the faculty, and was seconded to move forward in this process. That vote received a 10 to 3 majority vote. I'm not sure how many elected officials are here, but any of you who get 77% of the vote, congratulations to you. That's almost unprecedented. But this committee voted by a 10 to 3 majority vote to move forward with this last part of the process, and we acknowledge it would be the last part, to take the remaining two candidates and vote on them to see who receives a majority vote. Again, whatever happens in the process should happen on a majority vote. This is what the process protects. We did that. And I think it's very defensible. Perception, let's talk about perception. I called the editor of the St. Petersburg Times editorial section yesterday, and I asked, and we had a disagreement, it was not a very friendly conversation. And he kept making his point, I kept making my point, he did a better job of making points than I did, but he's in the editorial business of persuading people, and I'm not. And I asked him the question, "Did you view the meeting, the video?" "No." "Did he talk to me beforehand to get my take on what had happened?" "No." So it's just interesting that there was criticism of our process. I questioned the process of St. Petersburg Times editorial board not to view a meeting, which is a public meeting, before editorializing on it. Now, let's get back to the question of perception. If the board chooses to adopt the committee's report, the search committee, which we set up based on Dr. Hockaday and our outside experts' recommendation, and unless Dr. Hockaday has a different answer today, when I spoke with him twice this week, he says our process was a good process, and our process followed the rules that he set forward for it. And he has repeatedly told me that. I've asked him that question as of yesterday at 2:30, just to confirm that there was not a, that we varied from his process, that we strayed from his process. No, he again reiterated to me that the process worked exactly how it should have worked, how he had it set up. And he has no stake in the outcome, other than we followed the process. Perception is, if we adopt the committee's recommendation, we have an outside expert who set up the process, and he says we followed the process. We have detailed minutes which detail every aspect of our procedures. We have a video of the procedures that anyone can take a look at and see. We have a defensible process that we can point to and say, "We should move forward." Let's say we alter from that, and do like so many of the citizens, and I certainly appreciate you being here, and change our process and say, "Let's accept these eight people, and let's interview all eight of them." Y'all are smart in this room. What would the perception be? We changed the rules to favor one candidate. And that's the, and when it comes right down to it, if we do what so many people who recommended here, go with those eight, I think that's the, that is a more damaging, much more damaging perception. And how would we defend it? There would be no defense, other than that we're doing what seems to be the perception of favoring an individual candidate. I came into this process not favoring any candidate. And I still have, don't have a favorite candidate. There was not one person, in the beginning of this process, I came in and said, "I want that person to be our president of this college." And I think the perception, if we don't accept this committee's report, which is so defendable, which has a whole track record and history of activity, of people who were here, who viewed the meeting, other than if you have a different agenda, you know, to change the candidate mix, would be in favor of what the search committee recommended. Now, there's other people on the search committee, too, who voted. There was a student, you know, I think we have to honor our student, we had a career employee on here. We have people from the community on here. I think everyone's motives are pure. I mean, but I think that the bottom line is that we have a defensible mechanism that's been set up, it's been certified by an outside expert who specializes in this, and has done 72 searches, and that we should move forward with the committee's recommendation.
Mr. Johnston?
I want to follow up, Ken, I think you've summarized the, our meeting fairly well. I want to add a couple of things to it. We were distinctly told that a PhD in education was not a requirement. It was a board rule. You spoke strongly, all during the process, about which differed from the board rules, and I respect, because that's your personal opinion. Mr. Brett spoke to us to start off, and told us what the rules were. And we did not need to consider a PhD in education as a requirement. But the majority of the committee certainly felt that that was a necessity. And you can see that by the seven to six vote. That's the way it's split out. What my job, I felt, was, was to keep it open, and keep it fair, and to go with the process as the majority wanted. Although at times, I did feel we changed our methods of voting. But that was, we were allowed to do that, but we did change it. And I think the perception of change comes about from the fact that the voting process, the way we voted, we changed it to, as you referred to Dr. Hockaday, majority rules, and the question on the PhD in education. Other than that, I, my job, I thought, was to not try to influence anyone. But I found, as Dr. Hockaday and I were walking out after the end of the meeting, that he said, "You know, it's interesting, there were eight votes for Mr. Baker, and we ended up with six at the last meeting. I wonder what happened to those two votes, and I have no idea. I don't even know who they were." And I think all have this, this has led to the perception that something was wrong in the process. Not the process itself, but something was wrong in the way that it was carried out. What you said and how you described it, you're taking it right from the board minutes. And I did ask Kim, and I think she worked all weekend, and I thank her for that, because I said, "We're going to need copies of the minutes for this meeting, and I appreciate you putting in the extra time to get them for us, because obviously, they were useful here." But I think the board, I think the selection committee has spoken, and it's certainly their recommendation, and as a chairman, I'm not going to disagree with their recommendation. We had a thorough, strong discussion. We had a lot, we, in fact, I thought we had a 15-minute meeting to go from eight to three to five, and we had several, I don't know what the exact time was, we spent several hours on discussing, discussing things. But, but did we follow the board rules exactly as set out? I think too much emphasis was placed in the meeting on a PhD in education, and the board itself did not set that up as a criteria.
Mr. Chair, and I wasn't a part of the process, so I don't know this, but if I remember correctly, you all voted to not have a PhD, it was equivalent to, right? Was that provided to each committee member before the process?
Of course.
Okay, so if it was provided to each committee member before the process, that means each committee member, on his or her own merit, had to read the packet and make sure that the candidates that they brought forward were qualified under the guidelines. So whatever you did in the public when you were in this room that particular day, because I said, again, I left, would, would not have, should not have carried any weight, because each individual should have read the packet and done what was proper based upon the guidelines that were set. Nobody changed the boundaries.
Well, I think you're right, Mr. Givens, no one did change the boundaries. Mr. Brett came to our first meeting and did reiterate the ground rules, along with Dr. Hockaday. I think Dr. Hockaday and I reminded before every session and during the meetings of the search committee that they were to follow the board rules. Other than that, they had their own set of rules. Because I think Sid McKenzie commented at one point that there were no Robert's Rules of Order, that the committee set its own guidelines, and that's exactly what they did. Now, did they change them during the process? They certainly did change the voting to the majority. Because as we first voted, we voted, as you pointed out, we had two, they each got 11, Keegan in law, and Baker got six. Now, if we'd have stopped at that point, we'd have done exactly the process that we had done at the previous meeting. But I'm glad you pointed out, I didn't know exactly when you'd left, I've been trying to think through this thing.
I left right after that.
But then, if it's Mr. LaValle, I guess it's in the minutes who did that, changed and suggested we go to a majority, and to keep it an open process. I did not object to that. I did not object, because I didn't want to imply any undue influence. I wanted the committee to make its own recommendations, under its own methods, and own decisions. And that's the process, Mr. Chair, that we went through. And I did not feel bad after the process.
Mr. Burke?
I just want to make sure we're real clear on this PhD question, because it was a job of, we set up the criteria to be a candidate. It was Dr. Hockaday's job then to tell us which of the candidates which he received applications for were qualified. So that was, that was, he applied the standard that we set as a board to the letter. And so if a person had the equivalent, they were part of the pool. And then it became the committees, through personal judgment, of who had the best criteria. Obviously, we had higher education, leadership, or its equivalent as another criteria. And that was left at a senior management level. We didn't say president, but we picked, the search committee recommended, and the most votes constantly were two people who were president. So we gave a little bit more preference to someone who was a president than who was a provost, or a dean, or someone else who was in higher management. When you take everyone who's qualified, yes, then it becomes a judgment call on whose criteria matches up best with the needs of St. Petersburg College. But we didn't, there was no motion ever made, or there was no effort ever made to exclude any of the candidates. Matter of fact, it was just the opposite. The committee was concerned that there may have been people who were qualified, who didn't get, who were left out of the 22. And so the idea that someone was left out of the pool because they didn't meet the PhD requirement, or the higher education or equivalent criteria that we set up, is not correct. They weren't part of the pool.
Well, I'm not sure I quite agree with you on that, Mr. Burke. The tone of the committee was that if the one candidate did not have a PhD, he wasn't going forward. Period. And that was, that's the way I view the tone of the committee.
Mr. Givens?
Mr. Chair, I'm over there, we move forward on this particular issue, number one. And number two, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnston for doing a fine job, because he did a fine job under, in a tough situation. You must remember, we're trying to replace a president who has been here for a very long time, and it is never an easy thing. And so, Mr. Johnston, I would like to thank you for the process. I think you did a fine job, as I'm sure you did 30 years ago, you did this time. And so I'd like to thank you for serving as chair of that committee as well.
Mr. Chair, I do think that whatever we do, we've got to put the college first, and we've got to back off any of our own personal interest. This college means too much to all of us, because I would guess if you took everybody in this room and had added up the years of experience that they've had with this college, you'd find an association here that goes back for a number of years. I look over there at Joe Lang, I know Joe's been around this college almost as long as I have. And so I think whatever we do, it's got to be done in what is the best interest for the college.
Amen.
It's time to be some statesmen here. I'm not sure what that is, you know, how to go about that. But my feeling now is, what is in the best interest of the college, and how do we get there?
Agreed.
Now I get a few minutes. I want to thank Mr. Johnston for serving as the chairman of the search committee. I know that that was a very tough task, and I think he did a great job. I am a graduate of St. Petersburg College. My youngest son is a student here. I served a number of years ago, for three years, as the president of the Alumni Association. That was a long time ago. And when I was asked about a year and a half or two years ago to consider serving as a trustee for the college, I was honored, first of all, and I was excited, and I looked forward to being a part of this incredible institution. I am still excited. I'm still honored, and I'm still looking forward to the future of this institution, because it's going to be great. And I cannot stress that strongly enough. When this search process started, I said something early on, and I got it from a friend. And that friend said, "If you design an honorable process, the process will be honored." I mentioned that at one of our last board meetings, and I believe it with all of my heart. And I'm not going to go through every step we took. Mr. Burke talked about a few of them, but I believe we hired the best consultant. Mr. Burke talked about a few of them, but I believe we hired the best consultant in the country. I speak to Dr. Hockaday almost every day. I have developed an enormous respect for him. His integrity is impeccable, and he helped to guide this process, I think, in a very open, honest, fair way, that was going to be inclusive. He talked early on about how important it was to make sure all of the stakeholders had a voice in this process. He helped us design the composition of the search committee, as Mr. Burke had said, so that everybody was sitting at the table and had a voice. The process, in my view, was designed to be a perfect one. I am not so naive as to think that there would not be some rough spots along the way. And we just experienced one of those. I don't think that's unusual. The question is, does the process hold? Everyone is not going to be happy when an important vote is taken and an important decision is made, made. But that's just the nature of the beast. As the chairman of this Board, I have two goals. And these are the ones that I assign to myself. The first one was to be impartial. It's a very hard thing to do, but I have struggled very, very hard through this process to be impartial. The second one was to make sure that we follow the rules, and that we honor the process that we designed many months ago. I did not attend the search committee meetings, because I was advised by Dr. Hockaday not to. I came to the first one to thank everybody for their participation, and to give them their charge. The other two meetings I did not attend in an effort to maintain that impartiality. So I was not at last Thursday's meeting. So I can't speak to the intricacies of what, what went on at that meeting. I have enormous respect for Rick Baker. I supported him for mayor. I thought he was a great mayor. He is a dedicated public servant.
Sure.
And I am confident that Rick Baker will be successful at whatever the future brings to him. But this is not about Rick Baker. This is about the rules. And when passions flare up, and different camps start to form on each side, the effort to remain impartial is even more difficult. But I have spoken over the last week to three different people, who I feel are impartial participants in this process. They are also experts in processes like this. Dr. Hockaday, of course, is one of them. Mr. McKenzie is another. Mr. Lang is another. Our college attorney, our board attorney. All three of these individuals attended all of the meetings. All three of these individuals unequivocally guaranteed to me that the rules were followed. I have no reason to doubt them, and I believe them. It has been argued to me over the last week or so, that the Board of Trustees has the authority to accept these names, to reject these names, to add a name, to take off a name, to do whatever we want with these names. And, you know, we might have the authority to do that, but, and I'm speaking personally here, if we did that, why have a process? If you design a process, and you play by the rules, to come in at the eleventh hour and change the process is wrong. And I believe that with all my heart. And I may lose some friends who disagree with me on this, but I know, for me, in my heart, I'm right. I'm not asking everybody to agree, but that's the way I feel. We have four great candidates. I support that we accept these candidates. And I cannot say this strongly enough, I just feel that we all need to move together forward, united, for the best interests of this college. There are going to be some people who are not happy today, but I would plead with you, and I would urge you to please, let's leave it in the past, and come together and unite behind our next president, whoever he or she might be. Do we have any other discussion before we vote? Okay, the recommendation is that we accept. You want to give the names again, Mr. Johnston?
Yes, sir. Bill Law, Thomas Keegan, BK Waller, Paula Gaston Velt are the four candidates.
That's three.
Dr. Law.
I said Bill Law. I didn't say Dr. Law, excuse me.
Want to repeat it? Repeat it, please.
I've known him too long to call him doctor, I guess. Bill Law, Thomas Keegan, BK Waller, Paula Gaston Velt are the four candidates that the search committee recommends moving forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next steps in the search process, we're not going to spend a lot of time talking about now. I think everybody's about ready to leave. Just know this, that the four candidates will be contacted this afternoon, and all of them will be invited for a two-and-a-half, three-day session here at the college in successive weeks. Will be four weeks, one candidate a week, to meet with faculty, to meet with administration, to meet with community members, to meet with the Board. It's going to be a very long and good process. I encourage all of you to participate in it, and I know as soon as some of these details and dates get finalized, they will be made available to everyone, of course, on the website, and want you all to be a part of it. Are there any other items to bring up? Mr. Burke?
On the visits to campus, and I, I asked Amelia, and she was kind enough to send a preliminary draft of the, the visits, and I think it's a good plan. I just hope there's a mechanism for people to fill out some type of form, and I, or give some type of feedback where they can identify themselves as a community member, as a student, as a faculty member, administrative career employee, whatever, whatever classifications that should come up with, and give us some feedback on the visit to the campus. I think if we're going to have campus visits, and we're going to have these presidential candidates have some type of, at least, conversation, I don't want to call it a forum, just a conversation, that, that we get some input from, that there's meaning behind these visits. It's just not to go visit and sightsee on each of our campuses. Of course, we have the chance to interview each of them, and I hope we, I hope the process is set up, and I don't know how it will be set up, but I guess this is our time for input, is that, I think it's, I'm not sure, and I think we need to talk about whether we want individual opportunities with the candidates, which I, I don't particularly advocate or am against, but, or are we just going to see them as a board? Are there going to be set questions involved? All these types of things.
Amelia, would you?
Is this the only time for us to do this, before we start bringing them here?
Yes.
Yeah, well.
Where is that?
Mr. Burke? Mr. Gibbons?
We're often confused.
Mr. Chair, Mike, 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 I, while I like Mr. Burke's idea, I want to be very careful, that if we do something of that nature, we need to be careful that the questions are all the same for each candidate. Because if we start to ask questions of one person and didn't ask one or the other, we will be right back where we are today, with people thinking that the process was not fair and equitable for everyone. So if we do that, Mr. Chair, I think we have to have questions, the same questions for each one of the candidates.
Well, I, I wonder, Mr. Gibbons, if that's workable or not, because...
I wonder if that's...
I know there are certain candidates here, because I do know them, and I know I have particular questions that would only pertain to them and not to the other ones.
Sure.
And so I think restricting the questions, I, I can see the merit in, in having a standardized thing, but I think there's some things, I know in my mind, that on one particular candidate, I want to clarify their position as far as the four-year program.
Me, too.
And so I don't think we should try to limit ourselves to asking the questions we feel are important to understanding the candidates, and where they stand on various issues that we know will affect this college.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gibbons?
I think then we, we should look at each person's background, look at where they are, rate them ourselves, and submit our questions to maybe the chair of this Board, and, and let him determine how those questions get asked at each candidate. If they're different, that's fine, but they need to be submitted.
In my conversations with Dr. Hockaday, he suggested the same questions to start with, but then obviously that could lead on to more discussion.
Yeah. Parting gifts. Is this the same interview, just pulled down from eight to four?
And Amelia, why don't you address the group? You have been talking at length with Dr. Hockaday on the next steps, and I, I'm sorry, I'm not up to speed on that.
What you have in front of you is a notebook with the application and resumes and recommendations of the four finalists that you have left. And then you have the DVD of the four finalists, which you have. Now, what I wanted to just tell you, based on the questions, is that definitely there will be input in the process, and here's what's going to happen. On each campus, we're going to put each provost, each person in charge, and on every campus, it's either the chief executive officer or the provost. And they will have places on the campus where you can put your questions, no matter whether you're a student, a faculty member, or a staff person, or just somebody who walks into the street, you can put your questions into those boxes. And those questions will be used at the campus meetings, the particular campus meetings. For instance, if you're a faculty member at Tarpon Springs, and you have a question that you want all the candidates to answer, just go put it in the box, and that question will be asked. Unless it is obscene, or, or, you know, it's not a good question. We also are going to have, after every candidate visit, an email address, so that if you are a student on the Tarpon Springs campus, and you went to hear Dr. Law, and you had a comment about Dr. Law after you heard him, you can just go type it out and send it to that email address. It's going to be like American Idol. There will be one email address for each of the four finalists, and if you go and you hear Dr. Law say something that you liked or didn't like, you can go to that email address, and you can write your comment down and send it in. And all those comments will be given to you before you make your last decision.
Just a couple items. I hope we make it abundantly clear, especially to students, because they may feel, my home campus is St. Pete Gibbs, and I have a class during that time. That everyone is free to attend any...
Anything.
Campus whatsoever, you're, you know, that, that I think sometimes what we think is so obvious is not obvious, so we have to make it very clear that each one of these meetings is extremely open, and really publicize that email thing. I'm even wondering if, I'm just wondering, and maybe ask Dr. Hockaday, is there a potential just for like a short questionnaire that we could put as part of that, of where people can go on and say, you know, "I was favorably impressed by his personal," or "her personal demeanor," or, you know, want to scale the one to five, or, or something like that, just to, just to help us, because I think that's going to be very important, these campus visits and the feedback we get, and we may see, and see or hear things there that differs from us. And I think the more feedback we get in an organized fashion, and I know it's hard when you're having a, a forum, or a conversation, I like to call it, if we can get that feedback would be, I, I think, just tremendously beneficial. And I think it real, adds real meaning to each of those campus visits.
Yes, we want you to get all the possible feedback you can get. Another thing is, we've got these visits scheduled, at, the meetings that are, the public meetings that are going to be open are scheduled at various times throughout the two-and-a-half day visit. For instance, if you're teaching a class and you are on the Tarpon Springs campus, and the Tarpon Springs faculty meeting is during the time of your class, just don't go to it. I mean, go to the one at Clearwater, that's, you know, at a different time. Or go to the one at Seminole that is at night, or the one at J.C. Brooks Place, which is at night. You know, go anywhere you want to your faculty meeting. It could be the, it could be the campus that is closest to your house, maybe you'd like to go to that one. But, you know, it's not, it's not determined, we're not predetermining that because you teach at Tarpon, you have to go to that meeting. Or even if you're a student at Tarpon, you don't have to go to that meeting.
Will there be an identifier when people email as to which campus visit they participated in?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Amelia, a couple of things. You have down here in the third day, three to five Board Room.
Yeah.
That is where the trustees themselves will have a chance to sit down and, and...
Yes.
Discuss whatever they need to, they feel they need to with each of the candidates.
Yes, and Dr. Hockaday is going to send you a suggested list of questions that you would ask all of the candidates. You don't have to accept them, you don't have to use them, but he will send you a suggested list, and then, you know, whatever else you want to ask me on that, or if you don't like his list, that's totally up to you, but he is at least going to send you a suggested list of questions.
And I think, Mr. Chair, I don't know whether it's, I know that Amelia has been an extremely, extremely important person in this process. She has helped the search committee, she's coordinated things, she's done things that we don't even see. She anticipates the size of the rooms, what we're going to need, tries to think of everything.
She does think of everything.
And we certainly owe you a great gratitude of thanks, because this process wouldn't be where it is today unless you have done all the work you, that you have done.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
One other thing, Amelia, I'll add a detail that I've read about pitfalls in, in these types of things, and I think it's important that there be, unless it's you, because you're retired from the college, okay? I think we should not, we should be careful to make sure that the, everything is equal as can be with the campus visits, and also that there's not a key person taking that from the college, who's an employee of the college, with each candidate all the time. Because there may be a perception that that is a favored administrator, or it's a, or potentially that person may form opinions of, of that person. So I think, unless it's a, I think it would be great if it was you. So I think, unless it's a, I think it would be great if it was you, or a retired faculty member, or retired administrator, or even as Dr. Hockaday suggested when he first visited our Search Committee, not me, but other Search Committee members, may be the host for that. If you remember, he mentioned that at one of the meetings about the Search Committee being a host, one of our business leaders or something, being willing to escort that person from place to place that day. So it's a person not a, who has a, who, job, maybe, you know, that person may develop a feel for that person's job, you know what I'm saying?
I do. I will be with each candidate unless I'm old, something happens. One other person will be that person's host for the two and a half days they're here. And it will, there will not be a provost, it will not be anyone who has any kind of a...